All right, put your hand up if you'd like to open up the Board of Education meeting for Thursday, March 28th, 2019, before you go to the question desk.
The notice was sent to the Hobie News Tribune, Star Ledger, local source in the front of the municipality by state lawyers as hoping this building is ending on. In addition to listed items in this agenda, this Board of Education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as allowed at the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. In order to maintain proper decorum of this meeting, please place all cell phones on silent. Cell phone use including texting and answering is prohibited.
Rofel.
Ms. Cozak.
Here.
Ms. Menonella.
Here.
Ms. Shahada.
Here.
Ms. Beviano.
Present.
Ms. Birch. Mr. Gargano.
Here.
Ms. Gilliam.
Present.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Martuzzi.
Here.
All right, the approval of minutes, the minutes for the last meeting. Motion, please. Rofel.
Ms. Cozak.
Yes.
Mr. Menonella.
Yes.
Ms. Shahada.
Yes.
Ms. Beviano.
Yes.
For the 26th and 28th, that's staying on the 19th. Ms. Mr. Gargano.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson. Mr. Martuzzi.
Yes.
All right, any comments or public on the agenda itself that you just have presented to you tonight? If any questions on that? If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Robert Tozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board of Education members, community leaders of the public, faculty and staff, parents, students. Beautiful night for a board meeting. I guess that's why there's so many people here. So, welcome, everyone. If you have not done so already, I asked one of our fine young students to cast out copies of the official superintendent's report, which is a newsletter that is published each month on the day of our board event meetings. It's available in print tonight and will be sent out electronically through email and on social media to more runs. It's an interactive newsletter that has short articles that give a rundown on recent news with a link to a larger story, sometimes with more photo or video on our district website. I'm really proud to announce tonight that for the fifth consecutive year, five years in a row now, the Linden Public School District has been named as one of the best communities for music education in the entire country. Linden joins only about 600 districts across the entire country who receive this prestigious distinction from the NAMM Foundation. This award recognizes the outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who work together to ensure access to music learning for all students as part of the school year. Linden was recognized for the board's funding of music, our graduation requirements, the amount of students who participate in music plans, the amount of instructional time devoted to music, our facilities, and our support for our music program. Especially this time of year when you, districts are creating school budgets, you'll find that in other districts when there are programs that need to be cut or money that needs to be saved. Typically, they go right to music and the arts. One thing I'm proud of in Linden is that that will never, ever be an issue here. This community is standing behind our fine performing arts program, our music program, and we've always been known for having a great program, and this award recognizes that. There's also a tremendous amount of research that shows that when students participate in music programs, it's linked to lifelong success, including higher school graduation rates and college attendance. So, congratulations to our entire school district. We have a couple presentations tonight. We're going to honor one of our outstanding coaches tonight, and then one of my favorite things that we do all year is we're going to recognize our Teachers of the Year and our Educational Service Professionals of the Year. So, without any further ado, I would ask the board members to step down off the stage. And Mr. Martuzzi and Ms. Cozak, if you would join me at the podium. Can everyone hear me? Little bit. The quality of the teacher is the most important factor that we have under our control when it comes to student achievement. We have incredible teachers here in the Linden Public School District. Tonight, we will recognize our Teachers of the Year, but we're not just recognizing them for tonight. It's what they do every single day, it's what they bring to our children every single day. Even when they're having a bad day, they are the heart and soul of our district, and it is my honor to recognize them tonight. So, we will begin, and we're going to find out who wins the contest of who brought the most staff members tonight. I see many of our principals, administrators in the audience, I see several faculty and staff, and we'll find out who won, and there will be a special prize. Now, teachers, what I would like to do is hand you a check for a lot of money. Because the regulations do not allow me to do that, tonight you are going to get a very special mug. Okay? You will love the mug, and a wonderful certificate. And for the first time in the history of public schools, when you open your bag, there will be a special invitation in there for you to a special event that I will discuss when you're on. So, without any further ado, the Teacher of the Year from school number one, Amy Maloney. That's pretty good representation, school one. All right, let's see what school two has. The Teacher of the Year from school number two, Margaret Embriaco. Representing school number four, Maria Chupin. Representing school number five, Nancy Cobalores. Our representative from school six could not be here tonight, but let's recognize her in her absence, Lauren Aydero. Representing school number eight, Despina Cordero. From school number nine. That's right. Maria Gallo. And representing school number 10, Tara Rad. So, our elementary schools are represented pretty well. And our two middle schools, we'll start with McManus, representing McManus Middle School, Ms. Courtney Serpoff. And representing Soul Middle School, and I believe Ms. Sette will be prepared with her speech tonight. Malvota Sette. Did you prepare something, Ms. Sette? No pressure. And representing our flagship, a guy who you would not want to run into in a dark tunnel, Nicholas Gombos. See, that's not fair, he made his students come. And they're ROTC students, so you know they listen. Congratulations to our Teachers of the Year. Tonight, it also gives me great pleasure to recognize our district's educational support professionals of the year. These are your unsung heroes in the Linden Public Schools. They are our paraprofessionals, our social workers, and guidance counselors, our coaches and reading specialists. They do so many things that often go unrecognized, but they are an extremely valuable part of our team. And again, it's my honor to recognize them tonight. From school number one, paraprofessional, Ms. Joan Coe. From school number two, paraprofessional, Evelyn Rivera. From school number four, teacher-coach for Language Arts, Lisa Capena. From school number five, teacher-coach for Language Arts and Literacy, Christine Urbanchi. So, real quick story, I have to tell. When Christine, Christine was a teacher in our district for, you know, many years, and when she was hired as an instructional coach, it was right before Christmas last year, and she had to come down to my office to see me. It just so happened on that day she was wearing an elf costume. She didn't know, she wasn't planning to come see me, but she came to see me for her interview in an elf costume. And she hired. From school number six, paraprofessional, Angela Hira. From school number eight, speech therapist, Deborah Moreau. From school number nine, academic support teacher, Viviana O'Laughlin. From school number 10, reading development teacher, Diana Carvalho. From McManus Middle School, paraprofessional, Karen Kuziancik. From Soul Middle School, social worker, Gwen Bannan. And from Linden High School, school nurse, Nornette Jacobs. One more round of applause for our educators. When you, when you look inside your bag, Teachers of the Year, Educational Support Professionals of the Year, you're going to find an invitation to the first-ever annual Teacher of the Year, Educational Support Professional of the Year luncheon. Very strict regulations in regards to how we spend public money, and one of the rules is we're not allowed to feed the teachers. We can feed students, we can feed their parents, teachers, no food for you. So, I formed a committee of amazing people who are helping me plan a luncheon on May 15th that you're all invited to. And I've reached out to the Linden Education Association for a nice donation, and I'm happy to say that Mr. Delgado has given us a donation to help make it happen. We've reached out to local businesses, and Chevys has agreed to cater the event. So, we're having a fiesta, and it's going to be wonderful. We have one more presentation tonight. Can I ask the athletic committee of the board to join me, please? We could not be happier to hear the news that one of our esteemed teachers and athletic coaches, Sherilyn Bazano, was inducted into the New Jersey Scholastic Coaches Association Hall of Fame. Coach Bazano, Bazano, a very well-deserving recipient, has been a mainstay in the Linden athletic program for over 25 years. She has built teams and relationships that span decades. Talk to any one of her players, and they will all tell you the same thing, that Coach Bazano knows how to pull the best out of every single individual on her team. Sheri is well-respected in the state and local coaching circles, but you'll never hear her mention of her four Union County Championships, the four North to Group Four sectional championships, or the two North to Group Three sectional championships that she has earned along the way. As unassuming as they come, Coach Bazano doesn't look to the spotlight, even though her well-documented success speaks for itself. It gives us great pleasure and satisfaction to know that Coach Bazano has earned an induction into the NJSCA Coaching Hall of Fame. This honor could not be bestowed on a more deserving individual. Ms. Bazano, please join us.
Thank you, everyone. I don't even know how to begin to thank this community enough. The support has been overwhelming. They threw a surprise party for me on Monday night. They got me really, they got me good. The Board of Education members that were there, who are my heart, the mayor, my parents, who are not just my parents and my athletes, they're my family. To see Pat, who bolted for me up here, is incredible. Shenator, who was also one of my students. To me, that's what matters. When you leave my program, it's not about the championships, the wins, the losses. It's about who you are as a person, the relationships that you're able to form, the jobs. Those are the things that are important, becoming a successful member of society, and that's testament to what I do and what the education process does here at Linden High School. Dr. Robert Tozzi, thank you so much for allowing me to come here every day and do what I absolutely love. My parents that are here, sorry. They're my rock. My two boys, Drew and Anthony, are also my rock. Without them, I couldn't do what I do, especially coaching with the long hours, so they're always there for me. I just, I can't thank you guys enough, this is overwhelming, it really is. Thank you.
Mr. President, that concludes my report. I would encourage everyone to stay for the rest of the meeting, it will prove to be exciting. I'm joking. We won't be disappointed if you leave. By the time we get up there, we turn around, you're out, it's okay.
We will continue with the lady, and the attorney's report is Cozak.
To the time of the meeting, we will have a motion for Linden Board of Education's floor. The motion is for the judge, evolution number 1, and ask for a second.
Mr. President, his clarification on this, please.
Rofel. Sure, if there's a question, any questions, any discussion, yes.
Any clarification? I looked at the September 25th report, I didn't see anything on the attorney report there. Can somebody just remind me what this attorney was hired for?
This was a complaint filed, an Evans complaint filed against two board members, and then the board passed a resolution paying the attorney, an attorney to prosecute the complaint.
And the attorney will be paid from September to today?
That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes. Mrs. Maganello? Yes. Mr. Shahada? No. Mrs. Viviana? No. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Ms. Gillian? Yes. Ms. Johnson? I've got nothing saying. Mr. Martuzzi? Yes.
Okay, the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of School and Deputy Superintendent, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I'd like to approve one through, one through eight and respectfully ask for a second. Second.
Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes. Mrs. Maganello? Yes. Mr. Shahada? Yes. Mrs. Viviana? Yes. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Gillian? Yes. Johnson? Yes. Yes.
Uh, personal finances, Ms. Posak.
The Personal Finance Committee met on March 20th. All items were discussed in the work session. The Personal Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of School, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I move item number one through 34 and ask for a second.
Second.
Ms. Posak.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is Dr. Rottozzi's number one?
Thank you, no, thank you so much. I would just like to express my condolences on behalf of the district. When we heard the passing of Edith Boyd, a longtime educator in the Linden Public School District. She worked, she worked at the Linden Public School District 39 years when she retired in 2011. She taught social studies at McManus Middle School. And just, just an outstanding educator who's loved and respected by all. Who'd like to send our condolences to that. So I took you here in a second.
Uh, yes, uh, Mrs. Boyd, uh, she was in the history department with me back when McManus Junior High School. And he started in '72. And she had a great career. I was at a retirement dinner and she moved to Carolina. And when I got to go up to Wichita, it was after the start. And we went to the funeral. Many of us who thought they were there and it was just so amazing. And so many of the students that we had from 25, 30 years ago were there. And, you know, it was reflection, but I can tell you, if there's another place we go to that's really good, that's where she went. She would that that the person. And my condolences to both of our husband. She was a creative, great lady. That's it.
Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes. Mrs. Maganello? Yes. Mr. Shahada? Yes. Mrs. Viviana? Yes. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Gillian? Yes. Johnson? Yes. Mr. Martuzzi? Yes.
The Personal Finance Committee, upon the recommendation of the Business Administrator, Board Secretary, presents the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. I move item number one through 23 and ask for a second.
Second.
Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes to all, abstain on number 16.
Mrs. Maganello? Yes to all, abstain to number 16, please. Mr. Shahada?
Yes to all, abstain to 16.
Mrs. Viviana? Yes. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Ms. Gillian? Yes. Mr. Johnson? Yes to all, abstain to number 16. Mr. Martuzzi?
Uh, yes to all, and abstain to number 16. Okay, um, building grounds and security, Ms. Johnson.
Building grounds and security committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of School and the Business Administration, Administrator, Board Secretary, present the following motion to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Item one through seven.
Second. Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes. Mrs. Maganello? Yes. Mr. Shahada? Yes. Mrs. Viviana? Yes. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Ms. Gillian? Yes. Mr. Johnson? Yes. Mr. Martuzzi? Yes.
Uh, planning policy committee.
Planning Policy Committee, set this policies for first and second readings to incorporate new features required by code of law and to elaborate our local district policies. For the first reading, I'd like to submit 502-0, role of parents and guardians to be revised to include the line of authority chart, and 513-1.6, drugs, alcohol, steroids, tobacco, to be revised to add new guidelines to substance abuse and parent guardian representation. I'd like to move these items and respectfully ask for a second.
Okay.
Rokel.
Ms. Posak? Yes. Mrs. Maganello? Yes. Mr. Shahada? Yes. Mrs. Viviana? Yes. Mr. Gargano? Yes. Ms. Gillian? Yes. Mr. Johnson? Yes. Mr. Martuzzi?
Uh, yes, uh, actually, athletic and technology, Mr. Gargano.
So athletics, there's no activity in this meeting. We have come to the end of the winter season. A couple of things that have gone on since this last meeting is, uh, girls' boys' winter track. We probably announced that Kyle Wuston became a new school, school record holder for shot put. Incredible 59.7 and a half inch throw. He eclipsed his previous record held by, previous record held by David Viles for over five inches. Wrestling this past year, Alex Dorsey and Michael Alvaro qualified for a state tournament in Atlantic City. Both wrestlers won the match and lost two matches at the state tournament. They both wrestled with a lot of pride represented within in a great way. Um, look forward to the spring season coming and hopefully all our spring sports do very well. That's all for athletics. As for, uh, technology, we have no activity coming this meeting. Um, some good things that are coming, um, with our tech, our technology departments. Uh, we're trying to introduce the Linden Competitive Gaming League, which is a great opportunity for our students to get into competitive gaming. There is a lot of scholarship opportunity, uh, stream of income that can really push to the achievement through that stream. And, um, this past week, we actually had a, um, interest meeting about it. Over 100 students came and showed interest in this. I think it's gonna be a really good program that we can start off. And, Ms. Rottozzi, it would be a great, a great opportunity.
No doubt. I'm shocked by the amount of interest that, you know, how big this is. I have scholarships and everything, I definitely can get through that. That's all. Thank you. And also, uh, back at the superintendent for we, there's one thing that we forgot to do with Dr. Rottozzi. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Martuzzi. I was remiss in not recognizing, uh, our four retirements that are on the agenda tonight. I know at least two of those employees are here in the audience. So I'd like to recognize Carol Citroni. I guess that's, you know, I was surprised when I got her letter. Carol's been teaching with us since 1989. Uh, as an elementary teacher, she's an outstanding teacher. Every year, um, I remember, I remember Mr. Carol telling me that her students, not that it's the big old and evil, but our students always did the best on the state assessments. More than that, I mean, they did, but more than that, she was just an outstanding teacher and loved and respected by all. And she really mentored a lot of the young teachers as they came in. So I know you're gonna be blessed by a lot of you. Ms. Coleman, this is the guy, where are you? Professional of the year, she says I'm out. Ms. Coleman has worked as a parent professional at school board her entire career. Is that right, Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
And, uh, she is, she's the mainstay there. She's known by all the families, generations of families. Uh, she has had generations of her own children, grandchildren and grandchildren in our district. Do we have great grandchildren yet?
In fact.
In fact, there you go. So she's a, she's a Linden, a Linden girl forever. And John, we're gonna miss you so much. Thank you both for your dedication to our students and our kids. Retirees, I don't think they're here, but I would just like to mention, uh, Laura Campbell, who started her career as a special education teacher in our district in 1986. She taught at schools one and nine. And in 2014, she was appointed as an LDTC where she's retiring from. And finally, Karen Martin, who started her career as a special education teacher in 2001. She's taught at Soul Schools one, two, and eight. Thank you both for, uh, for all you've done for our kids and our schools. I wish you all very happy, healthy, and long retirement. Thank you. We will have comments from our board members, any short comments? And we'll start on this end this week. Mr. Huck, uh, anyone, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I do. Um, first, I want to congratulate everyone who received an award this evening. Congratulations on the job well done. Um, second, I want to pay a little respect to the little girl, um, Raina Wright, 10-year-old from South Carolina. She was a Farmers Hill Elementary School student down there. Um, she got injured recently from a fight. Um, all the details are not clear, but it possibly was a bullying, started as a bullying incident. And this little girl was fighting about a fight. So just, um, as a point, if your kids come home and say they're being bullied or you know that they're fighting this, go to extra mount just to, um, you know, make sure that everything's okay. And if your child is suspected of bullying, please, 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 take the proper action, discipline them, talk to them, show them a video on what could be the consequences of bullying. Because those children that were involved in this fight, uh, live with us the rest of their life. A family lost their child and she's no longer here. So let's just pay a little respect to her. My condolences go out to her family and this school district because this is very traumatizing for all those children down in South Carolina. And that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maganello. Ms. Maganello.
I'd like to congratulate, again, our, our outstanding teachers of the year and our professionals of the year. Thank you so much for all you do on a daily basis for our children. And to all our teachers who are superheroes of this district, I'd like to extend my congratulations to you all. I had the pleasure of attending our Linden High School Sports Award Ceremony. And I just also, again, would like to commend our athletic director, um, Mr. Viani, for a wonderful presentation. And I would like to get to extend congratulations to our dedicated coaches that dedicate so much time and effort into the empowerment of our children who are the sports activities of this district. I'd like to also congratulate all our outstanding athletes that we have here. These kids give their all. They really give all their effort, um, and they bring up our district to new heights. It was such an amazing presentation. And I would just like to show the pride that we have in the Linden Public School District through our many programs, sports programs being one. And again, I would like to extend that congratulations to, to all our coaches, our students, and, um, all our athletes.
Ms. Posak?
I would like to congratulate all our teachers, staff, and our professionals. I as well was able to attend the, the athletic ceremony. I would like to congratulate all of our, um, wonderful students that are athletes. It's not easy, you know, focusing on schoolwork and also being a physical athlete. So congratulations, congratulations.
Mr. Gargano? Don't want to be a broken renter or something.
Um, I would like to congratulate you all. I know you do not easy. And it was really a blessing and honor to celebrate you because I've worked with some, alongside some of you. And so, um, I just want to say thank you for your dedication, thank you for your time. And for those who are retiring, um, congratulations on your new beginning. Um, I would also like to mention two things. The first thing that I would like to mention is that I believe Jerry Todd and Mrs. Wesley are collecting our costumes for our seniors. And, uh, this is, uh, to me, I think it's a great opportunity for, uh, any of you that are in the audience or have a friend that has a dress that you haven't worn in a while. Uh, it would be great if you could dry clean it and donate it to Linden High School. I believe they pick up their dresses on Friday and the girls are able to try on their dresses. And so, um, if you have a dress, please, 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 uh, bring it here. And the last thing that I would like to mention is that Madrana was one to the Sun Hero. Uh, I believe it was in Cracker. And I would like to congratulate all of those students that are being recognized. But most importantly, I would like to congratulate Nicholas, I mean Gilbert, uh, the Chief Nalesco, uh, one of our ROTC students. And it was a pleasure to witness all of his accomplishments and to hear, um, the things he has achieved as being, being one of our students. So I just wanted to say thank you and, uh, that.
Ms. Diano?
Thank you. Congratulations again on the last time tonight. Thank you to the teachers and, uh, support staff, parents, professionals, all that you've been willing to do. I know how, how tough your job is. Uh, on our retirees, congratulations on your new life. Especially to Mrs. Campbell, who I know since her days at school nine. And for the last four years, has worked very closely with my daughter. Um, I appreciate everything that she has done. Gilbert Nalesco, he's gonna be awesome once he graduates and moves on to his next career. I've known Gilbert for four years now through the ROTC program. He's an amazing young man. Um, on another note, McManus, uh, McManus Middle School. How many of you drink?
Water.
Water, soda, Gatorade, anything like that, juice. Um, how many of you use condoms and all these other bottles? Save your cash. McManus Middle School is collecting maybe 550 pounds of plastic caps. And they will receive a picnic bench right now, a picnic bench. You can either drop it off at McManus or you can drop it off at the public library. It will be open in a collection box for them. Also, at the public library, we're collecting plastic bags. So if you're shopping, you know, plastic bags of any kind. I know a couple of our parents have been amazing and been looking in. The library bought a basket for 230 pounds so far. We do that, we do see a free bench for free company as well. So keep collecting, recycling our plastic everywhere. Thank you.
Get that information, please, to me so we can, we'll send that to the entire district and publish it, please. And, uh, a couple of short comments, uh, for myself. I'd like to thank, just congratulate all the teachers and staff today. And all I can tell you is there's one person sitting in this audience tonight who I'm gonna say knows exactly what I'm talking about. Uh, uh, education from 1970 to what is today is completely different. What, what teaching was like in the seventies is not what it's like today. You've gotta have a passion for teaching today. It's a tough job. It's going in every day, on a stage, in front of 25, 20 kids, whether it's a six-year-old, 14-year-old, or you can be a 22-year-old teacher in front of seniors or 18-years-old. But I can tell you, it's a passion and I congratulate all of you who worked tonight and all the teachers out there. Because today is a tough, is a tough job. Correct, Tony? Correct. And, uh, and it has changed and it will continue to change. Because society's changed, our cultures have changed, and students have changed. But again, my, congratulations to those who are honored tonight and to all of those who are in the classroom, working every day, no matter how you feel. You still got the lunch table in front of all those kids to get your job done. And again, my congratulations to all of you. And, and on, uh, April 25th, our next board meeting, we will have our budget presentation from OCA. Ms. Gaylord? They will show you our whole budget for the language for, uh, this year, from 1920. Listen to me. And, uh, for the next year, and anyone have any questions on the actual budget meeting? Which you will be here to ask. And, uh, it will show you where it's going and we will vote on that tonight. And we've accomplished something in this budget this year, believe it or not, that has never, ever been done. This is the board of commissioners. And when someone told me this, I looked it up and made sure, but we did it. There was our vision, we did it, we did it, and we did it. And that will be, and that will be next board meeting. Thank you all for coming out tonight and see you in April. Happy Easter, happy Easter. Thank you.